Okay, now we'll have comments from visitors. You will have three minutes. Give us your name and address. The council will not answer questions or address you, but we will listen to any concerns anyone has. Anyone?
Good evening. My name is Nicole Myers. I live at 327 Elm Tree Drive in Jefferson City. My husband and I own Myers Aviation, based here at the airport in Fulton. We've been there for the past three years. Our business supports three full-time employees and two part-time technicians, who are members of our Aviation Maintenance Apprenticeship Program. Over fifty percent of the aircraft we serviced in 2024 are based at other airports and specifically fly to Fulton for services we provide to the aviation community. When the airport experiences a delayed response to winter weather events, the impact on my small business is devastating. Even with these situations, we continue to provide unwavering daily onsite support to the city for airport operations. We have continued to offer multiple avenues... Sorry, I ran up those stairs. That would allow us to play a more formal role with the daily airport operations, but have been unable to find a way to have a serious discussion about this offer with city administration. Over the past year or so, we have witnessed an increasing tension between the city and the airport tenants. In my opinion, the underlying issues here are the breakdown of communications between the city administration and the airport tenants and the need for sharing information related to standard airport operations. I'm concerned that the tenants sharing their thoughts might be interpreted as complaining or wanting special treatment. This is not the case. We simply want to be part of the discussions and are being limited for avenues to express our thoughts. The Airport Advisory Board is the best step towards healthy conversations and solutions. The Airport Advisory Board is an essential collaborative effort to discuss and resolve airport-related issues. Whether it's talking about raising the hangar rent, finalizing land leases, effective snow removal procedures unique to an airport or planning for Oshkosh, the Airport Advisory Board is the ideal setting for these discussions. While I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak here tonight, there is no opportunity for interactions or discussions in this setting. While the Airport Advisory Board may not be listed under the municipal code of the city of Fulton, it is still an essential board to ensure the longevity, success, and continued growth of this city asset. In recent years, the airport has taken tremendous steps towards improvement in attracting more pilots to the area. I'm pleading for this council to reinstate the Airport Advisory Board meetings. By taking steps to reengage in conversations with the city administration and the tenants, the airport can continue to grow and thrive as a valuable asset to the city of Fulton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan LaShmont. I live at 3405 County Road 328, Fulton. I'm a tenant at the airport, and I'd like to take a minute to thank the council for signing to the table the discussion about a rate increase until gathering more information. I think that after this last winter weather event, which started on January 4th, our airport was closed and is still closed. To me, this highlights an issue and makes me ask the question, what could be done better in the future? As a tenant, I have a signed agreement and am expected to uphold my end, which I have, but I must ask, shouldn't the city be trying their best to keep up theirs and to keep the airport open? Some tenants, including myself, use our aircraft for business and commuting. These closures cause issues with schedules and create conflicts. Absolutely appreciate the efforts of the city to try to clear the runways, apron, and taxiway. However, the efforts have fallen short and we are stuck with a closure until the proposed date of the 16th. I believe the proposed snow removal policy states that within seventy-two hours of an event and one lane cleared on our roadways, the airport will receive attention. However, no overtime will be allocated for this property. Hindsight's always 20/20, but looking back, if efforts would have been made on Saturday, when it was in the forties, we would have an open airport. How much revenue was lost during this time of closure? Fuel sales, local businesses, and the mechanic on the field. I was told some crews actually worked over the weekend. With my short time as a tenant, I've witnessed a few airport managers come and go. I ask you in the future, although there is no requirement for training, could we explore avenues such as the Missouri Airport Managers Association and the Missouri State Aviation Council to better assist our manager understanding tenants' needs and maybe help bridge the gap that seems to be with understanding aviation? I would also like to ask for the reinstatement of the Airport Advisory Council. There was once regular quarterly advisory meetings held. At these meetings, any issues were discussed along with current ongoing projects. I believe if these advisory meetings were once again held regularly, we could address issues and concerns in a better way. I'd also like to address Councilman Washington's statement at the last meeting that he was unaware of any of the business brought to town by the airport. Currently, there is a mechanic shop on the field that provides a much-needed service and employment opportunities. And while the airport is closed, there is a felt economic loss to said business. While some may see the airport as a direct loss, there is an unrealized profit here to the city and many local businesses. In addition to the mechanic that's on the field, the local colleges and Dollar General Distribution uses their field regularly for business, as well as our previous governor, Parson, just last year. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
My name is Lance Campbell. I'm at 4601 Nathaniel Drive, Columbia, Missouri. I've got a page of remarks here that I was going to read, but I'm not going to do that. I'm just going to kind of cut to the chase and say, those of all of us that have been here routinely here for, call it last month or two and then last year, we're just simply here trying to help. That's, you know, and we can see that there's effort from the city as well, and we appreciate that. But please take all of the things that we're doing in the positive sense that we're just here trying to make a better asset and resource for the community and for us. And if there's anything that we can do, please let us know. We just want to be involved, so that's it. Thank you for your time tonight.
Anyone else? Seeing none, seeing no one, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda, which we only have one item on, I believe. And that is SERVE.
Mr. Mayor, I have to...
Their fundraiser.
I have to recuse myself because I'm on a SERVE board.
Yeah.
Yes, so this item's on here as SERVE is requesting... Ooh, I was going to address that here, just one sec. So SERVE is requesting a fee waiver for the rental fees to use the Legends Recplex banquet room. As the mayor just mentioned, though, unfortunately, with the members that we have gone this evening and then with Councilman Henchy having to recuse himself as a board member, even if we were to get everyone's affirmative vote, we would not have enough votes to make a decision here tonight. So what we can do is we can go ahead and just move past this issue, and then we'll review it with the mayor. And if you guys have any input you'd like to share with him, it is something that is under Parks and Rec's purview currently, but we are looking to create a solid policy for fee waivers, and that's going to go before the park board later on this week. So we won't discuss this item since we won't have enough members to discuss it tonight, but I do want you to look over the request and the application that was sent your way and just get with the mayor if you have any input on that item. Okay?
Okay. Bill, you can retake your seat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Tonight, we have no unfinished or new business. We'll move on to council concerns. Councilman Henchy?
Okay. All right, there was no Public Safety Committee meeting since the last council meeting. The next scheduled meeting is the fifteenth of February twenty... the 27th of February on 2025. And also, I'd like to say thanks to all the workers that provided safe support of our public during this catastrophic amount of weather that we had. I think, I think that they were very... they performed very well. It was very difficult with all the ice, and a lot of people don't realize how difficult that ice really was and that our staff really did perform very well. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Reclu?
Yes, good evening, everybody. That's all I have to say. I have one concern. I was looking back over the memo from the meetings in December, and this is a... the committee is very solid rates management just grant that we're going to apply for. I was wondering, this is... is this one just for the dumpster? Or is this for the services too, and both of them?
So this grant that we applied for is for new dumpsters for recycling services. So simply just for the containers. Yep.
Otherwise, then that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Stone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This past Monday, we had a meeting of the Historical Preservation Commission, and a couple of items that came from that. One is that the commission did have a submission to a photo contest in which we were awarded recognition through that photo contest. Be watching for that. We're going to try and include that in the next newsletter from the city. The commission continues its strategic planning and tactical planning for this year. May is Historic Preservation Month, and we've already started our work towards that. There's going to be a couple of budget items that are going to come through as a request that are in the budget that were recognized as part of the budget, and now we're going to be looking for those expenditures in the next couple of months. The next meeting of Historic Preservation is Monday, February the 10th at 1:00. All citizens and council and administration are welcome to attend at any time. I want to, you know, again, I think we're all probably going to do this is echo the thanks of everybody that did anything the last couple of weeks in terms of winter weather. All of the city workers, all the, all the city services that we continued. To my knowledge, there wasn't a single glitch in utilities whatsoever during the last two weeks, which is just absolutely wonderful. You can, you can pretty much survive anything if you've got a little bit of heat and electricity. And then, I know we're... we passed over the SERVE, but I would like to just add my support of that waiver. And I'll put that in a note to you, Mr. Mayor.
Good.
And then I'm very thankful for the continued open conversations with the airport tenants and look forward to seeing more of that involvement with the Airport Advisory Board and those continued conversations. We definitely appreciate anybody's comments from the citizenry about things that we can do to improve and then having administration that proactively works towards those improvements. That's exactly why we're on here. And that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Combs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Plan and Zoning Commission has not met this month. We will meet later on. This month, I believe, is the 28th. I might echo the same thing they've said about the roads. I thought we got those taken care of pretty quickly. I know there were some, some complaints and whatnot out there, but I mean, as long as we stayed off the roads to get going, I think they got cleared pretty quickly. To that, I know it continues to be one of my, my things. I did see people walking in the road today due to sidewalks not being covered or uncovered, cleared. One of the big things with that I just noticed around town is there are a lot of businesses and organizations that have plowed like six-foot piles of snow onto sidewalks, at intersections specifically, which is hard for any individual to clear or any group to clear once it starts to freeze and ice like it is. So I just, I mean, I know we have a plan. I know we've been communicating clearing sidewalks. I just don't know what we can do in the future communicating even more. I don't know if we can communicate more, but I think it's just over time communicating that. The need for people not to have to walk in the road. I saw somebody walking into work this morning. It was like, yeah, they have to walk in the road. There's no other place for them. So a couple other things. Was it last week? I did see one of our trash bins that was being... our neighbor's trash bin was being lifted into the truck. It fell in, and so the crew member had to get out and pull it in, which was a challenge, I'm sure, all on its own. But just being in all the other work that I do, I'm assuming, I know we train for safety probably regularly. We just want to make sure that we're reiterating that regularly, whatever that looks like. I know it varies per crew. I think he did everything right, but he's not the only one in the truck.
I think her eyes twitching a little bit, so yeah.
Like, I watched, he had three points of contact the whole time, wasn't actually climbing in, so I think he did it right. But I'm sure there's lots of education with that. It was like, this guy's lifting one of those barrels by himself, one-handed. He didn't get hurt, I'm glad. But that's a lot of weight for anybody. So just addressing that in some way. And then the other two things were just more from conversations with citizens as I was going around getting signatures last month. I know every election cycle, there's always talk about a plan, a strategic plan. I know those are expensive. Sometimes if you have to hire those done, I do think it would be beneficial the council could come together and kind of say, hey, this is what we need for a plan for the next year, like what we want to see accomplished. Or from city staff, say, hey, this is what we're trying to accomplish, and so that we can support that on the back end. Just something that we can say, hey, these are our goals for 2025, whatever that looks like. So when people ask what you're actually doing, you can say, this is where we're headed. I think that's just kind of a general, good start of the year kind of thing. And then the only other thing that someone, a couple people mentioned, was I know we outsource a lot of our marketing, if you will, to bring people into the city through like the chamber, like, like bringing businesses in. I don't know if there's more room for us to work on doing some of that ourselves just to say, hey, we're also doing this separate from them. Because they said they felt like we outsource a lot of that and there's little control, but if we can bring some of that in or take more, maybe a more proactive approach in working with the local businesses, it might help. That's a lot more this week. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The first utility board of 2025, first utility board meeting will be on the 27th at 1:00. Everybody is, of course, invited. I look forward to all of the discussions that we have coming. I think we did really great things last year, and I look forward to this year. I want to reiterate, of course, what everybody else has said. I think our crews did an excellent job. I do look forward to the discussions at the airport. I think that we can only move forward from here and as long as we're all open, I think that we're going to be able to do great things this year in communication. I also want to say thank you to our city crews for the Field of Joy. We haven't had a meeting since Christmas has been over, and I just want to reiterate how wonderful that was and how much I appreciate them putting it up and taking it down. I know that I've heard a lot of positive comments from our community on how well that was put together this year. So I wanted to say thank you. I also want to thank all of our utility departments. With all the snow, I know it's kind of been a lot of moving parts with our trash especially, and I think our, our crews have all done an excellent job on that as well. I know navigating in the snow around cars and safety concerns, and I just think that everybody has done a really, really good job, and I'm really proud to represent the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I might just say a little bit about the roads. I know I've got complaints plowing somebody's driveway in. They plowed mine in. I, I mean, nobody gets... everybody gets the same. So the biggest problem, and I think Kyle could probably attest to this as well, was we had ice first, and then the snow came. Well, our salt, and we... they told me today, I don't know how many tons of salt we'd laid down, but it didn't work because the weather was too cold. So we had to wait till the weather warmed up. We got the snow off primarily, but our blades are not going to cut through that ice. And it was just, it's not something that usually happens. We usually don't have this much snow. We used to have twice as much snow, but it seems like we're not getting as much snow as we used to have. And I think a lot of our citizens maybe forgot some of those big snows that they couldn't even get out of not only the driveway, but the road. So I think we need to have some patience, and I think our guys did a great job. They did with the equipment we have and the resources we have. I think they did a good job, but it didn't pass the muster to some people, and I, I'm sorry about that, but there's nowhere else to go with that snow. You can't stop and back up and clear every driveway. They would, they wouldn't even make it halfway through the city. So, that being said, I think Kyle and his people did a good job. I was out almost every day checking the roads myself. Sometimes they were good. Sometimes they weren't as good. Some roads were better than others. A lot of it was just depending on where the heat was and where the sun was the brightest on the, on the roads to let that salt work. So, that being said, we've got more salt ordered, I understand, and we probably need to get a bigger salt shed if we're going to have more snows like this. So, that being said, Director, do you want to comment?
Yeah, no, I would echo all the things that were said. And again, I think our crews did a wonderful job. You know, there are a lot of challenges that come with a large amount of snow and ice and then two winter weather events that occur, you know, within a week of one another. So I really, my hat's off to Kyle and his crews. And again, that also encompasses some people from utilities, building and grounds. Parks and Rec has been really... Parks and Rec has been really active as well, so it's really a full-city event when we have to respond to anything of this nature, and they, you know, again, they showed up and they, they made a difference when we needed them most. It's not always perfect, but one thing I can tell you is these guys are doing the very best that they can with what they have, and they absolutely are, are also telling me what they think we need for the future. So I really appreciate Gary and Cory and the crews and Kyle, you know, putting together a plan for what the future might need to look like as well, so we can prioritize our dollars here at the council level. So again, thank you all for, for the feedback. Thank you to our community. I know that you were very patient, whether it was, you know, roadways or us having to change solid waste schedules. You were incredibly understanding, and I know it was frustrating at times, but we really appreciate you being understanding. And then, I also want to give a quick shout out to Michelle Kidwell with Callaway County Emergency Management. In spite of being a little under the weather herself, she was really wonderful with helping us with our communication and getting information out to our citizens. So we're going to have a push here, after we speak with her later on in a couple weeks, to get everybody signed up for Smart 11, Smart 911 alerts. It's a way for you to get text message alerts, email, phone calls, and it was really beneficial for those people who already had signed up for the service, but we were partnering with them, and it's a great, amazing service that they help us out with. So I really appreciate Michelle with all of her communication with weather and getting those alerts out. And then lastly, I just want to say thank you to the team here. You know, we were, I think we were as prepared from a strategic standpoint as we possibly could have been. They were coming up with, you know, redundancy plans after redundancy plans, and so I think you have an amazing city team that is always looking forward, trying to be as proactive as we possibly can be. And then, you know, the thing is, we learn something every single time. So we may not have gotten everything right this time, but what we can do is take that for the next time and try to do even better. So, thank you all very much.
One more thing to add to that, too. I know that there are communities around us that didn't, that weren't prepared. They ran out of salt. I know that one of the little gals that works at our office lives in California, and my understanding is, it was a disaster because they just weren't prepared. They didn't have enough salt, and they were having to use sand, and it was, it was bad. It was really bad. And so, again, you know, I'm glad that we were prepared going into that and that we have the crews that we have, because we, we did have those resources.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read Resolution 3568, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3568, Thriving Communities Grant Making Program. A resolution of the City of Fulton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the Thriving Communities Grant Making Program provided by the EPA, and cultivating healthy environments and establishing an effective date. Make a motion, motion that we pass Resolution 3568 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Very well. This is a no-match grant. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next, we'll have Resolution 3569. Councilman Combs, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3569, Local Records Disposition. A resolution authorizing the destruction of city records that have met retention requirements in accordance with RSMO Chapter 109 and applicable, applicable state retention schedules. I make a motion to pass Resolution 3569 at this council meeting.
Second.
Very well. This is something comes up every year, and has forever. Do we have any discussion on it? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the second reading of Bill Number 1738.
Mr. Mayor, what about-
Councilman Henchy, would you read that, please?
What about the Resolution 3570?
Mr. Henchy, I put an amended agenda on your desk with a new one tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We actually had removed that one.
Oh.
After I sent out the packet.
I apologize.
No problem.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1738, Shelter, Animal Shelter Service Agreement. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, of Missouri, to enter into an agreement with the City of Holt Summit for animal shelter services provided by the City of Fulton Grab, Grab Center, Animal Shelter, and establishing effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1738 for the third reading at this council meeting.
Second.
Very well. We discussed this at the last meeting. This is just redoing a contract we presently have. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Councilman, will you read that again, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1738, Animal Shelter Service Agreement. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to enter into agreement with the City of Holt Summit for, for an animal shelter service provided by the City of Fulton Grab Center, Grab Animal Shelter, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place, I mean, I make a motion to place Bill Number 1738 for final passage at this council meeting.
Okay.
Very well. Do we have any discussion at this time? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, would you call, do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Mr. Luther? Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington? Mr. West? Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Five members affirmative, three absent.
Okay, thank you. We do have a couple announcements. We have the ribbon cutting at Memorial Park on the Century Park. It'll be Friday at, this coming Friday at 11:00. The city will be closed Monday, the 20th, in observance of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. And the next council meeting will be January the 28th at 6:30. Anyone have any other announcements they'd like to make?
Could you clarify the trash schedule for next week?
Mr. Dunlap, come on down.
Tuesday, we will pick up Monday and Tuesday. That's if we don't, you know, have another storm and have a polar bear slide going on around here like we did last week. So we're hoping to get one week of normal back, but if, if something happens, we'll reach out like we did and notify everybody where we can. But our plan is to pick up Tuesday, Monday and Tuesday.
And next week is scheduled as a recycle week. Will that still be able to go on?
I think so, yeah. I, I hate to guarantee anything right now, how we've been going the last couple of weeks.
Normal operations, do we plan on picking up curbside recycling next week with the holiday? All right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further business? All entertain in turn.
Second.
All in favor?